Finance and Law Subcommittee will come to order. Attendance, Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Mrs. Shavz.
Present.
And Mr. Vier is present. Item one on the agenda, bills payable FY 2016 in the amount of $1,305,353.84. Wishes of the committee.
To approve the warrant with, I have some questions.
Second on discussion.
Discussion. Mrs. Shavz.
Page three. Sorry for one second, I need my glasses. Anderson Maruni Sherry for $1,250.
She has been providing speech and language services from throughout the district.
Okay. And on that same page, the Barnes Tree Service, its maintenance of grounds, where was that?
That was at the Jack Tripp Field.
Okay. Page eight, Dr. Jeff Dreher LLC testing.
That is a neuropsych testing for a student.
Page 14, MV Electrical Contractors, it says athletes clean repair equipment, $9,065.
Yep, it is to install two outlets for shot clocks and install two new hoop motor receptacles.
So two outlets for?
Shot clocks.
Shot clocks, stuff for basketball?
Yep, basketball, and then install new hoop motor receptacles.
Hoop?
That's all at the high school, yes.
Oh, so that must make them hoop going up and down?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And the last one is on page 20, SRPPDD.
Circuit.
School Security, $4,715.57.
This is another, this is a vendor that we have been using, and this one is for services through July through September, security services.
And so what kind of security services are they doing?
Serpit assists us with our emergency response protocols, training.
Oh, so emergency training?
Emergency response.
Oh, okay.
If there ever was a crisis situation, the drills that we've attended in the past as a committee.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a company that works very closely with Mrs. Hoy, the police department, and IRS IROs, and all our first responders.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the Subcommittee?
Mr. Vier, if the maker of the motion could kindly amend to include an item on page 18, voucher number 26225, in the amount of $8,448, I'd like to be recorded as voting present, as I serve as a co-treasurer and on the board of directors at Pride, Inc.
Mrs. Shavz, is that agreeable?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is amended. If there's no further questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion passes three nothing, and that is it. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Okay, motion was made and seconded. All those in favor? Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Call to order the first regular December meeting of the Taunton School Committee. Please stand. Pride of Legits.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberation. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted in our care. If you could please remain standing for a moment of silence. Frank Grande, 76, of Lawlingford, Connecticut, the loving husband of Deborah Smith Grande, passed away on November 18, 2025, at his home surrounded by his family. He was born in New Haven, Connecticut, on September 9, 1949, was the son of the late Silvino and Amelia Mary Aviano Grande. In addition to his wife Deborah, Frank is survived by his son Christopher Grande, his sister Elizabeth Canberra, who is a library media specialist, E. Paulin Parker, and her husband Peter and Anne Marie Fisher. Services are private at the convenience of Frank's family. So if you could keep his family in your thoughts and prayers and a moment of silence. Thank you.
Mr. Vier, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Enos is absent. Mrs. Shavz.
Present.
Mr. Palowski.
Present.
Mr. Vier is present. Ms. Santos.
Present.
Mr. Laura.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan.
Present.
Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Mayor O'Connell is absent.
Thank you. Okay, approval, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to call Ms. Mullen up to join us, please, for this meeting.
Motion for?
So moved.
Ms. Mullen to join us at the table.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next is the, there will be no student advisory committee report tonight, oh, I'm sorry, the approval of the minutes for November 19.
Motion to approve the minutes of November 19, 2025.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. There will be no student advisory committee report this evening, and there will be the executive session. I'm going to refer to Mr. Cabral.
The matter regarding executive session, I have discussed with all board members, so they are well informed regarding the matter. We're going to discuss an executive session this evening. So I would say we bypass executive session, would be my recommendation.
I'll make a motion to bypass executive session, go straight into public input.
And I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Public input. I'm going to read this, sorry, Mr. Cabral. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kindly request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation and guidelines will be provided upon sign up, and individuals be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual will have to speak will be about five minutes, is that right, Mr. Cabral?
It's three.
Three, okay, three minutes. And who signed to register, and it will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. Okay, public input, right? Or where did I?
Mr. Vier has the list.
Oh, Mr. Vier?
Yes.
Okay, oh, you got it, that's right.
Well, 11 people signed up for public input tonight. First person on the list, David Ellis, 60, Grant Street.
Good evening.
As a parent of three students currently enrolled in Taunton Public Schools, I want to take to say a few words about the Taunton Education Association's position on educator safety, as currently shown that's in Taunton local and regional media. As I say, I have three students in our schools, the high school level, middle school, and elementary, with over 18 cumulative years in the district. In that time, we have run the gamut of experiences. We've received the worst phone call perhaps a parent could possibly receive, and dealt with grace and effective communication that's at the elementary school level, with the superintendent, and the teachers and administrators that's of this building. We have seen, you know, exceptional teachers in these buildings shift out of the classroom and into developmental assistance, educator roles, Title I and the like. We've seen talented administrators get burnt out that's from, in this district, and leave to go ahead and work elsewhere. At the same time, we've seen bright young teachers run through proverbial walls. We've seen effective response to bullying and interstudent issues planned out by school counselors. At the same time, looking around this room, I see a lot of faces that I deal with on a daily basis as educators, so please be aware that as I say these words, it's not necessarily that's you individually. With those agreements and action plans and management that we've dealt with, with the superintendent's office, and with the administrators at the schools, we've seen teachers fail to perform the most simple aspects of these response plans. We've had teachers lie to us directly about violent situations at Letty Preschool. We've seen our own children that's become indifferent, disinterested, and be completely unengaged by teachers of this district for an entire school year, by teachers who choose not to get out of a classroom seat at any time during that entire year. We've even gone as far as twice having to remove our students from field trips because of teachers that's failing to pay attention, that's two students in the classroom, wouldn't want to bring our kid to a zoo there, with a teacher of that nature. I bring this up not because of the fact that I want to see teachers endangered, I don't. I want this classroom, these classrooms to be safe. I recognize the district that's had 61 episodes last year in the first term, and has had 37 episodes first term this year. I'll tell you what, if you had a 40% increase in the MCAS scores in this district, the Taunton Educational Association would be out there on the street picketing tonight for a new CBA. You can doubt that, but that's exactly what would happen. But I bring this as well with these episodes that's of student endangerment, out of my concern to you, at the same time, out of concern to the students in the classrooms as well. Because just six weeks ago, in this building, a teacher assaulted a student, and we as of yet have received the final notification that's on the event, that's from the principal's office and the superintendent's office, as blocked by terms from TEA's CBA with the city. Ladies and gentlemen, the street goes both ways. You have an agreement that's with the CBA, with the city, to use the health and safety arrangements and protocols with the district, with the superintendent's office. You failed to meet, your representatives failed to arrive to the first meeting, you canceled it. Again, this goes both ways, and missing that first appointment, that first, you know, scheduled meeting that's for this arrangement, that doesn't look good, and it looks disingenuous as a Taunton parent to have skipped that meeting and then fill this room up tonight. That's, I apologize, that's my position on the matter, so thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Next person signed up, Sarah Lincoln, 22 Crane Ave. North.
My name is Sarah Lincoln. I reside at 22 Crane Ave. North. I'm a Taunton resident. My son attends Taunton High School. I work as a secretary at a Taunton Elementary School, and I am also the TESSA Vice President. For those that don't know, the TESSA Union represents the educational assistants, lunch recess assistants, library assistants, security guards, and secretaries. I've gone back and forth on what I want to spend my time giving input on. Let's face it, there are so many areas to choose from. Safety inside the classroom, outside on the playgrounds, a living wage for my members, equitable pay for secretaries, diapering for general education students, so much to choose from in so little time. Today, I've decided to focus on our lowest paid staff, our lunch recess assistants. Our lunch recess assistants work three and a half hours a day. They are not eligible for benefits like city insurance, a pension, or FMLA. They accept this position knowing that, and knowing they were started off making $17.81 an hour, which equals an annual gross pay of $11,968.32, just shy of what you, our school committee members, earn for a stipend per year. I don't say this to shame you, but to make you aware. Many may say that they don't have to work part-time. They could get another job that has better pay and more hours. And you're right, they could, but they shouldn't have to. I'd like to share a little bit about one of our lunch recess assistants we're lucky to have at Galligan, Melissa Salagi. She started off as my coworker, she became my friend, and is now my sister in life. For anybody that knows Melissa, they know she lights up a room. She's one of the strongest, most positive people I know. Her family, they're just amazing. Melissa has two sons. She took the job as a lunch recess assistant because both her boys, Jonathan and Sam, are autistic, and they needed her at home to get them on the school bus, to set them up for a successful day. They needed her home to get them off the bus, because not all kids, no matter what their age, can do that alone. She's grateful to have found a job that works for her family dynamic, allowed her to have the same days off as her children, and one that she truly loves. Then the unthinkable happened. Jonathan was diagnosed with leukemia, and wasn't she darn lucky she had this lunch recess gig so that she could take the time she needed to care for her son? No, she didn't qualify for FMLA, but the district was gracious enough to approve a long-term leave for her. She was able to be with her son when he needed her the most, and be at the school to have a much-needed escape. She will always be grateful to the district for allowing that. That was then, and this is now. Her sons are healthy and thriving at UMass Dartmouth, and for whatever reason, she doesn't have the heart to give up her lunch recess position. She loves her job, her fellow assistants, her school, her principals, and mostly her students. Melissa is one of our highest-earning lunch recess assistants, earning a whopping $21.42 an hour after nine years of service. Melissa often uses her own money to buy bubbles and chalk for the kids that are on physical restriction due to injury. The other day, she brought in a 12-pack of gloves for the kids that complained their hands are cold while outside at recess. She is the first to give a donation for a staff member in need. Melissa brought home $12,202.34 last year. She does not make a living wage. Melissa, just like many of our lunch recess assistants, gives her literal blood, sweat, and tears to her job and her students. She often has to break up fights by putting her body in the way of kicks and punches between students. She has been bitten, punched, kicked, called the B-word, and much worse. Sure, they get disciplined, and then they're right back at it, the same students, day in and day out. And trust me, there are much worse incidents going on at our other schools. I urge you to come to our schools and see for yourself. Melissa plays with our kids when she can. It's hard to take time to do that these days with more and more students and the same amount of staff. She teaches them games that they've never been able to play before. She plays tag with kids that don't even have a backyard, and this is their only chance to run around like the kids that they should be. At Galligan, we don't have a gymnasium. Our kids are in the classroom for art and music. Their only chance to leave the classroom on most days is for lunch and recess. So she bundles up, sunscreen's up, wears a neck fan or a scarf, layers, layers, and layers to deal with the New England weather we all know and mostly love, so these kids can have their one opportunity to get outside if possible. Melissa and I have literally shed tears about the things our students share with us. She cries for them because she deeply cares for them. They confide in her because they trust her, because she is there for them day in and day out. It's hard, it's a hard job, even if just for three and a half hours a day, on top of being an essential job for our schools and our students. As TESSA Vice President, I feel our district can and must be better. Not our principals, our teachers, our support staff, we are all doing the best we can with what we have. We need the school committee's support. We need you to hold our district's administration's feet to the fire. We need change, and we need it now. We cannot keep revisiting these issues year after year after year without resolution, which is why TESSA currently has multiple proposals on the bargaining table to address these issues. As TESSA Vice President, as a Taunton resident, as a mother of a school-aged child, as a school employee, I'm asking you for two things. The first is to come to an agreement at the bargaining table as soon as possible that will pay our members, like Melissa, a living wage and guarantee lunch recess staffing ratios that are safer for staff and students. The second is, come visit our schools, see what's actually going on, not just what you're being told by district leadership. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen.
Next up is Robert Perry, 1531 Stanzion Drive, Dayton. The topic is student recognition.
Good evening, members of the board, and thank you for your time, or your time this evening. I have a letter from the Dayton Veteran Services addressed to Mr. Cabral. Subject is student recognition. Recently, Dayton was recognized as a Purple Heart town by the National Headquarters of the Military Honor of the Purple Heart. The Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration. It is awarded to those veterans who have been wounded or lost their lives in defense of our nation. The town of Dayton formally accepted this honor on November 12, 2025. The following members of the Taunton High School Air Force Junior ROTC Color Guard participated in the ceremony. Cadet Major Patricia Andre, Cadet First Lieutenant Mason Brandon, Cadet Second Lieutenant Abigail Knox, and Cadet Staff Sergeant Landon Soares. Their entrance into the venue, their presentation of the colors, and their military bearing clearly signaled to those in attendance the significance of that ceremony. We thank them for their participation, signed by Raymond Hague, Dayton Veteran Services Officer, and myself. We'd also like to give kudos to the program director, Math Sergeant David LaPlante. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Next person signed up, public input, Denise McGorick, 183 Walker Street. Topic, safety in schools.
Dear members of the Taunton School Committee, I'm here this evening to express my deep and growing concern about the state of safety in our schools. As an educator and as president of the Taunton Education Association, I care profoundly about the well-being of every student and every staff member who walks through our doors. A few years ago, the TEA launched our Support Our Students campaign. We came to the school committee asking for help for critical services to be put in place. While we appreciate the actions that were taken, it is now clear that we must take a hard, honest look at the effectiveness and acknowledge where they are falling short. In recent months, we have witnessed a sharp rise in classroom evacuations and incidents that leave staff injured and students in unsafe situations. Every time this happens, learning stops. Every time this happens, every child in that classroom loses the instruction they deserve. And too often, these situations arise because students are not placed in settings that can appropriately meet their needs. We know that we cannot stop these behaviors from happening, but we can change how we react to them. We are asking for the services and support these students require, and for the staffing levels necessary to keep all classrooms safe and functional. It is unacceptable to expect educators to manage increasingly complex needs without the tools, training, and personnel required to do so. We all agree that every child has the right to a free public education, but we must confront the reality. If a student is placed in a setting that does not meet their needs, we are not fulfilling that promise. Convenience cannot be the deciding factor when it comes to student placement. Safety, appropriateness, and adequate support must guide their decisions. We are asking the students be placed in classrooms that are truly suited to their needs. We are asking that the district bring the appropriate services to those students, and we are asking each of you to consider how these daily realities impact the educators who are being asked to manage them with far too few resources. We need and deeply appreciate your continued help and support. Tonight, I would like to share a letter from one of our members. It offers a powerful reflection of what our most vulnerable students are experiencing, and what our educators and their classmates are being asked to manage every single day. Dear Dr. DeMello and members of the school committee, I'm writing to express a deep and urgent concern regarding the increase in physical aggression towards teachers and peers within our schools. Throughout my 25-plus years as a Taunton educator, this issue has grown significantly, specifically within the last few years. This behavior has become normalized, often seen as part of the job, yet it threatens not only staff safety, but also the stability of our learning environments and the overall well-being of our students. Educators within inclusion classrooms across the district, including myself, are being hit, kicked, punched, pushed, bitten, and subjected to objects being thrown at them during the course of our workday. Given my experience, I understand that challenging behaviors are part of the profession. However, physical violence is not, and it must never be treated as an acceptable or inevitable part of teaching. In my classroom this school year, these incidents have occurred daily and persist throughout the entire school day. What is especially troubling is that many teachers feel these behaviors are becoming normalized by the district. Too often, incidents of aggression are downplayed, minimized, or dismissed with statements like, "That's just how children are now," or "We own them," or "Put them in for student support," a process that can take several weeks or even months to provide the student with the necessary support. This normalization places our staff in harm's way and sends a dangerous signal that their safety and the safety of their students is not being prioritized. When aggression is not taken seriously, safety becomes compromised, increasing risk not only for teachers, but for all students. As a result, morale is deteriorating. Many educators feel undervalued and unprotected, which fuels feelings of despair and disillusionment. As we are all well aware, the recent Abby Zwerner case highlights the real devastating consequences when school leaders fail to act on clear warnings. It is a powerful example of why we cannot allow violence to become normalized in our classrooms. It is vital that things change before someone becomes seriously injured in Taunton. Our teachers deserve to work in environments where they can teach without fear. We have a responsibility to ensure that such an environment exists now more than ever. I know that I'm not the only one who ends each day feeling completely exhausted, both mentally and physically. Each day, I am constantly anticipating or responding to violence, an expectation that causes myself, students, and other staff in my rooms stress and exhaustion. In addition, meaningful learning has significantly decreased, and lost instructional time has become routine in my classroom due to the frequent evacuations, ongoing safety concerns, and the need to manage emotional regulation of my students. In addition, our students deserve classrooms where respect, stability, and safety prevail. Many students in my classroom are beginning to feel unsafe and anxious because of the repeated aggressive behaviors they are witnessing. They have expressed fear about being in close proximity to a peer who frequently hits, throws objects, or lashes out unpredictably. Even when they are not the direct target, simply observing violent behavior creates a heightened sense of stress. During parent-teacher conferences, several parents express concerns that their child is afraid to come to school out of fear they could be hurt. School is supposed to be safe space for all students to learn, and in some situation, it is the only safe place, some of them know. We are exposing children to classroom environments where children lose their sense of security and trust in the school setting. This constant state of worry affects more than just their emotional well-being. It impacts their ability to focus, participate, and feel confident in their learning environment. Several students in Several students in my classroom have been avoiding certain activities, choosing seats farther from the incident-prone areas, having accidents, or asking adults for an escort around the classroom. These are not behaviors rooted in typical childhood anxiety. They are responses to a classroom environment that no longer feels safe to them. Children thrive when they feel protected, supported, and cared for. When violence occurs repeatedly and without effective intervention, students internalize the message that their safety cannot be guaranteed. This undermines both their trust in the school environment and the teachers who are meant to protect them. In closing, while FAP and LRA aim for inclusion, a general education classroom may not always meet every student's needs. Some students require specialized instruction or supports that are better provided in alternative settings to ensure both academic progress and safety. If the Taunton Public Schools do not have these programs, we must take responsibility to identify or provide settings where they can thrive and succeed. We need to do better. Thank you for your time, your service, and your commitment to the safety and well-being of our school community. I am hopeful that together we can take meaningful steps to protect all those who dedicate themselves to education. For myself... For myself, in closing, I want, I want to be clear. Our educators are doing everything within their power. Our students are doing their best. But we cannot do this work alone. We have to continue to work together. Our request is simple. We ask the school committee to actively listen to the educators who work with these students every day. Engage with us. Ask us what we need. Together, we must take decisive steps to ensure that all students and staff are safe and supported. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McGorrick. Next person signed up for public input, Corinne Werra, 60 Puffin Way. Topic, student safety.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Corinne Werra. I live at 60 Puffin Way in East Taunton. I am the president of TESSA, representing the dedicated secretaries, educational assistants, security guards, and lunch recess assistants who keep our schools running every day. We have been in negotiations since August. As part of our recent negotiations, we have requested additional staff recess, for recess and lunch. Our current contract requires that no fewer than three staff members supervising as many as 160 children on a playground at recess. We recently proposed a ratio of 30 students per one adult, which I still think is on the higher level. A request that was rejected by the negotiating committee. They offered us a 50-to-one ratio, which really isn't any different than what the existing contract says. It's just a spin. Just for context, a lifeguard cannot supervise more than 25 swimmers at a time. A daycare cannot fol- it has to follow strict staffing ratios. Classrooms operate under defined student-to-staff limits. Why then are we unwilling to establish similar, similar standards during lunch and recess? These are the times when the kids feel free to run around and get all their energy out. This is when injuries and emergencies are more likely. Do we really want to wait until a crisis occurs to act on this? I ask the committee plainly, how can three people safely remove 160 elementary students from a playground in emergency? The plain answer is, you can't, so something needs to be done. The presence of a student-to-staff ratio should be the foundation for our safety. Our members complete injury reports multiple times each week. Students are spitting, biting, kicking, throwing objects, breaking glass, and running out of the building. Just yesterday, a fifth grader bit an educational assistant. A fifth grader. This starts at the pre-K level. This is not just disruptive, it's traumatic for students and staff alike. As a part of our negotiations, I had requested to be copied on all injury reports. This request was denied. I want to emphasize that this is not a HIPAA violation. HIPAA is when you have sensitive medical information that's included on the report. I ask you to take a look at the form used. I sincerely hope that the school committee will request regular briefings that include the number of injuries each month, what schools, whether medical attention was required, and if they had to follow up. We have a lunch recess assistant that has had to have multiple follow-up visits, year-to-year comparisons. This data would help ensure that all parties fully understand the severity of the situation, and we have a transparent, informed conversation about in which direction we're heading. We need to plan better and have a positive impact in our schools. Our unit is currently working without a contract. This means our members have not received their step increase or any raise. We are asking the committee and the district to prioritize a fair settlement, one that values the essential work of every employee, ensures that no one in our schools must choose between supporting the children of this district and supporting their own families. Please feel free to reach out to me to discuss any of these issues any further and to work collaboratively towards making our schools safer for everyone. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your attention and your commitment. We appreciate you, and we hope that you will act on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Werra. Next person up is Paula Noor, 25 Menadnock Ave, Taunton, Mass. Topic is safety.
Hi, everyone. My name is Paula Noor, 25 Menadnock Ave here in Taunton. I'm a library media assistant at Mulcahy Elementary School. This is my 11th school year in the district. Tonight, I'm not reading a letter that I wrote. I am the TESSA building union rep in my building, and one of our assistants wrote a letter and asked me to read it. "I was outside for kindergarten recess with three teachers to seven classes. A child picked up something off the ground at the playground and started chasing three classmates, stating, 'I'm going to stab you.' I ran over and put my hand out, not seeing what was in his hand, and asked the student to hand me what he had. He quickly stabbed the needle he had found into my hand. This would not be the first time this student has acted out violently to students and teachers. I am currently still attending doctor's appointments to get my blood checked. These are unsafe conditions and a very concerning work environment." For my coworkers and myself. Caitlin Capello, Mulcahy Kindergarten Assistant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Noor. Next speaker is Najib Kaddish, 2nd Fourth Ave, Taunton, Mass. Topic is same, safety.
Hello, everyone. My name is Najib Khateeb. I'm a Taunton resident. I'm a husband of an assistant at Mulcahy, and I'm a father of two kids attending this, the school here, which is the elementary school, Mulcahy, and Friedman School. I would like to highlight three, three key points. Assistance, so, which is including my wife, perform critical, skilled work. Be manage classroom, assist students with special needs, support teachers, and ensure the safety and stability of the school day. These responsibilities are not extra. They are essential for our, for our, our kids. Second, current compensation and working conditions do not match the responsibility. Excuse my emotion, because I just heard the story right now, which I think maybe a lot of us just heard it for the first time. Someone just going to work and getting stopped with the needle. That makes no sense to me, and I guess it makes no sense to everybody. Imagine he stopped another kid. So what's gonna happen? Just asking for a fair contract, which is an investment, not a cost wise. Fair wages and safe working conditions reduce turnover, improve students' outcome, and strengthen the overall stability of the district. Every strong school system is built on the people who support students, students just direct, directly. I respectfully urge the committee to finalize a contract that reflects the reality of the work and that provides feel, fear, compensation, and ensure a safe, supportive environment for those who give so much to our children. So again, so whatever we're, we're gonna ask for as a parent, resident of Taunton, and a husband of a school worker. Just a fair contract and including the number of the assistants that are in, for example, in Mulcahy. There are more than 900 students there, and there are only nine assistants. I don't think it's enough. I don't think it's enough. I don't want my kids to get involved in a situation where I have to stand up and go and fight. Fight who? Fight another kid? No. We need safety. And those people that are working there, they are given a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kaddish. Next speaker is Elise Greaves, 25 Pond Street, Rehoboth, Mass. Topic is student-staff safety.
Good evening. I'm reading this letter on behalf of a colleague in my school. I work at an elementary school in Taunton. All right, she states, "I am writing to formally express my professional concerns as a school adjustment counselor regarding the significant behavioral and safety issues that have persisted within our school setting. Over the past four years, I have witnessed a notable increase in the intensity and frequency of unsafe behaviors. Students and staff being kicked, punched, bitten, verbally threatened, just to name a few. I have witnessed students eloping classrooms and school buildings with myself and other school staff running after them. No individual in our school community should be subjected to physical harm, and the normalization of these incidents is deeply troubling. Despite my therapeutic background and commitment to supporting students' social, emotional needs, I believe that appropriate and consistent consequences are an essential, essential component of a safe and structured learning environment. Currently, consequences are either lacking or inconsistently applied. As a result, students are becoming desensitized to harmful behaviors, and these behaviors have become the new norm. This environment compromises the safety, emotional well-being, and learning experience of all students and prevents teachers from engaging in meaningful instruction. Additionally, administrative responses have often been hands-off with limited follow-through and inconsistent communication. This has further contributed to the, to an amount, environment in which staff does not feel supported and students and staff are not being kept safe due to the lack of clear expectations or accountability. The school district is not providing an inclusive, trauma-sensitive, and instructionally-focused environment when safety concerns overshadow the learning on a daily basis. This has been reality for the four years I have been in this position, and it has significantly impacted my role. Instead of engaging in the therapeutic work I am trained to provide, the position has shifted almost entirely into behavior management and crisis containment. After four years of navigating these challenges without meaningful systematic change, I have made the difficult decision to leave my role. This decision comes from a place of professional and personal reflection as well as my concern for both student well-being and my ability to practice effectively within the scope of my training. I am hopeful that by sharing these concerns, the school district will consider the urgent need for consistent expectations, administrative support, and practices that ensure the safety and dignity of every member of the school community." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greaves. Next speaker, Juliana Ferrari, 464 County Road, Bourne, Mass. Student safety, staff safety, and mental health is the topic.
Good evening. I, my name is Juliana Ferrari. Many know me as Jules. I was an ABA therapist for 11 years for Taunton Public Schools. My last day was October 31st, 2025. I would like to read the letter that I shared at my resignation. "I don't want to do this anymore. That's what I said." My last sentence as an ABA therapist at Taunton Public Schools. "For 11 years, that line hasn't ever crossed my mind, and yet it poured out of me with tears and the inability to catch my breath while holding the feet of a six-year-old boy under a car, fearing that if he let go, he would run into the woods. I don't want to do this anymore while the staff stand above you asking what to do, screaming, my face buried in my hands, lying on the cold pavement, nose bleeding in a puddle of tears. A hand of a friend, a coworker, rubbing my back, telling me to breathe. A 33-year-old lies there drained, unsure of herself, her future unknown. And as the breaths low, what do you do? You get up and collect yourself. Sitting in an office chair, you hear the feet and voices of your coworkers, some scrambling to help out your class, others continuing with their duties as normal. Except you don't feel normal. You replay the scene over and over in your mind, asking yourself, 'How did we get here?' You realize you're sweating and your body aches. The nurse, the, the school nurse for our students, is walking in, reported by the principal, to complete a checkup on me. She takes my pulse, oxygen, and eye gaze. I feel embarrassed, nauseous. My heart aches in my chest. A friend, another coworker, enters and states we are leaving. I follow. At the door, I stop. I look right down the hallway towards my classroom. I should go back to them. It's what I'm supposed to be doing. Except the thought of returning, trying to finish out the day, thinking of all the behavior's data, parents' requests, questions, and needs sends a rush of panic over me. I turn left and leave. I aware, I am aware that Taunton Public Schools is not struggling alone. The concerns have been expressed, follow suit outside the RICE program and across all public schools nationwide. Teachers are caught between everyone and supported by no one. The behaviors of students have intensified along with mental health issues and parents' concerns in understanding this new world of technology. When practicing lockdown drills, teachers make the statement now, not if a school shooting happens, but when a school shooting happens. Staff shortages, larger class sizes with greater needs, and teachers are training new teachers. Classroom management is no longer about building relationships, structure, routines, and connections. Instead, it's about de-escalating trauma, being a teacher, a counselor, a social worker, and crisis team, all in one. A study found 44% of teachers leave within their first five years, newer teachers being two and a half times more likely to quit than their tenured counterparts. A survey by the National Education Association revealed that 55% of teachers leave the education field sooner than they initially planned. 61% of teachers reported feeling burnt out, 21 experiencing poor mental health. The teaching profession is experiencing its lowest levels of employment in 50 years. The interest profession among incoming college students is a historic low. In the 2024-2025 school year, schools were short 55,000 teachers and an additional 270,000 were not credentialed to work in K-12 classrooms. In the last five years, there's been a increase, a 30%, 38% increase in physical attacks, 60% increase in disruptive behavior, and verbal abuse is up 40%. What happened to me isn't an isolated moment. It's part of a crisis that's unfolding across the country, so why am I writing this? I know that many of the areas discussed above may be beyond your control for change, but I'd like to think that Taunton Public Schools takes pride when a devoted staff member, who has dedicated decades to this district, leaves or retires with their head held high, satisfied with their achievements, and is ready for the next. held high, satisfied with their achievements, and is ready for the next chapter of their life. That was not my case. I didn't leave bitter, I left broken. That's not leaving a job, that's totally reworking your brain again to believe in something, to become whole and to find your purpose. You want to retain and attract new hires, then listen when I say, I hear it in their voices when they call the check on me. I hear it now, something I didn't hear in myself. Depletion, exhaustion, and hopelessness. So I may just be one person telling you their story, but I think it's one worth listening to. I fear what happened to me will happen to other staff members, and it will keep happening again and again and again. The people I work with are returning to work with their own story to tell, carrying emotional loads no one sees. Struggles and traumas that need healing. Instead, they come and heal our students. Cancer, diabetes, heart problems, broken hand and foot, common cold, pregnancies, failing relationships, they come to school. The death of a friend, mother, father, sibling, spouse, or even the death of their own child, they come to school. A chair is thrown, a lotment out of the building, rooms destroyed, bit, scratched, spit, swat, sworn at, threatened, hair pulls, aggressions, a punch in the stomach, and we bury our struggles deep down inside to help this student, a child, deal with the crisis at hand. Just because we carry it well doesn't mean it isn't heavy. Taunton has done many good things, including hiring amazing individuals. I write these words on the backs of their strength and support, lifting and believing me every day. The RISE program is more than just a job you can walk away from, it's a unit, a bond that is unlike any in the work field. What we have and what we go through daily, I would say we work together as close of a unit in a military branch. We work collaboratively and achieve goals through teamwork, along with having the skillset to be adaptable, quick thinking to handle unexpected situations. We are constantly having to juggle varying behavior plans, de-escalation tools and techniques, and always thinking three steps ahead, being aware of all students at all times while allotment, tantrums, and attempts of schoolwork are occurring. Twelve students who are unable to voice their wants, needs, or feelings in any capacity that would leave or wander with no sense of fear or danger, unable to feed themselves, use the bathroom, walk down the hallway, or have any safe independence. There is no true individualized work being done, while one child is working on requesting bathroom, another safe body, another one is learning letter sounds. Juggling it all the best we can for these students, being in this constant heightened state of alertness, you rely on your team to survive. I don't share this out of bitterness, but out of hope. Hope that my words remind someone how extraordinary our educators are, even in the face of chaos. I want this letter to be seen by our district so we can grow and do better for the next person who becomes a part of Taunton Public Schools. Right now, what is occurring in our schools is comparable to a wildfire raging out of control, and where we are now, we are in the ashes. But if this story reaches the ears of one person who will listen, who can heal, and who can create change, we can rise again. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Ms. Ferrari. Next speaker, Cara Foster, 305 Scatting Street. Topic is contract student safety.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cara Foster, and I'm at 305 Scatting Street in Taunton, and I work at Chamberlain Elementary School in the TLC program as an educational assistant. This is my third year working with my loving, amazing, kind, and compassionate staff. I see every day the hard work the staff does to give our students a happy, nurturing, learning, social, and emotional-driven agenda. I could not do my job without the support from my amazing coworkers that are never afraid to step up to help. So many of the TLC staff put in extra time either before or after the school day to make sure we start off smoothly and have the students ready for the dismissal. I feel that with the cost of living going up drastically, the rise in insurance, and the amount of educational assistance are paid does not reflect all of these increases. The behaviors and languages that we are exposed to each day takes a real toll on each of our staff members. I know in the time I have been in the program, I have a hard time taking a sick day, knowing when staff members are absent, it affects the entire team. We each show up every day with open hearts, patience, and generosity, and I feel our new contract should reflect all of this. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Our next speaker is Catherine Tremblay, 36 Silverwood Drive. Topic is contracts.
It is unknown where the phrase about how you are only able to judge someone when you have walked a mile in their shoes comes from. However, this is what is being done to all of the members of the TESSA union. We are being judged about our value without knowing what we experience on a day-to-day basis. Personally, I have worked in three different schools, and I have been an educational assistant. It has also been said that the best way to learn about something is to experience it firsthand. That being said, I would say that my biggest challenge to Mr. Cabral would be to stand toe-to-toe with the people that you think are only worth a two-dollar-and-fifty cents an hour increase, the lunch and recess assistants. I'm not talking about a random pop-in, which you spend a minute chatting with someone right before recess begins or lunch period ends. I am also not talking about a cute photo op with some students that becomes a public relations outing for the website. I'm talking about you clocking in and clocking out as a lunch or recess assistant for an entire week. Furthermore, you should also spend a few days as an educational assistant in each individual program that exists in the Taunton School District. I am talking about not just spending a few minutes in a regular education classroom, I'm talking about spending an entire day in a regular education classroom, a RISE classroom, a TLC classroom, a preschool regular education classroom, an inclusion classroom, and a sub-separate classroom. I would want you to truly see what a day in the life would be like. You could also spend the day in the life of a secretary and see what they experience. Now, I know that you actually completing the challenge that I've issued you today is highly unlikely due to your extremely busy schedule. The point that I'm trying to get across today is that you truly do not know what your staff experiences on a day-to-day basis. The lunch recess assistants that stand out in the cold in the winter and the heat in the summer for three hours a day, five days a week, while trying to keep an eye on fifty children per person. The educational assistants that deal with more issues in one day than some do in months. The secretaries that are the first and last line of defense to keep all of our schools running like clockwork every day. Finally, I would like to say that I know your legacy and how you are viewed by the public is important to you, Mr. Cabral. Now, if you really want to go down in the history books and be the superintendent that gave the staff what they are worth, a living wage. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Tremblay. Thank you, everybody, for being here at this time. Madam Chair, that is everybody who has signed up for public input.
Motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Just one moment, please. I just want you to know that all of these issues are going to be referred to administrations. We don't take questions or respond to what we do, that's always been our policy. It's not anything against you. You certainly all have the right to come down here and speak, and I thank you for taking the time to do that. Have a good night.
Call meeting back to order.
Steve, you ready?
Okay. The humanities update presentation is gonna be rescheduled for a later date. Superintendent's report. Excuse me?
No, we're not going into that.
Superintendent's reports are information only.
Move to place on file. Accepted and placed on file.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Administrative business staffing report.
Again, information only on staffing reports, one and two.
Same procedure.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. FY two, so this is one and two, right? That's Taunton Public Schools and the other one, okay. FY twenty-seven budget timeline.
Information purposes only for the school committee.
Again, same procedure. Received and placed on file.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Subcommittee reports, high school advisory.
I'll take this one, Mrs. Fagan, if you don't mind.
Nope, I don't mind at all.
So on November nineteenth, 2025, there were several high school advisory committee meetings. The first one was at Taunton High School. During this high school advisory committee meeting, seventeen students were in attendance in Taunton High School. The students reported a generally positive academic and social experience, highlighting supportive teachers, strong hallway presence, a clean and safe building, and strong value in the college and career center and the Chapter Seventy-four programs at Taunton High School. Seniors especially noted a smoother year with fewer hallway issues and an improved school climate. Areas for improvement included cost placement, earlier guidance on rigorous cost work, better identification in student support for early college participants, concerns around equity and security interactions, or security guard interactions with students, and a desire for more collaborative instructional practices. Students also raised some concerns about math grading practices at the high school. They requested expanded arts and community service opportunities, and asked for stronger staff-student connections. Many students stated that the yonder pouches have helped their focus and improve their grades. Overall, students were proud of Taunton High School and emphasized that the targeted improvements would further strengthen Taunton High School. That was the high school advisory report from Taunton High School. The next advisory report is from the Taunton Alternative High School, which was also held on November nineteenth, and this meeting took place at two-thirty at the Taunton Alternative High School. Students described Taunton Alternative High School as a respectable, supportive environment where teachers build strong relationships and treat them like adults. They valued the flexible schedule, open campus, and individualized attention. Shovel students said the school has everything down to a science. I credited Principal Delaney and staff for creating a sense of belonging. Suggestions for improvement were minimal, though students expressed interest in adding healthcare-related courses and possibly partnering with Manit Health, which is a local neighbor. No significant concerns were raised, and the overall tone of the high school advisory meeting was pleasant. Three students were in attendance, with guiding counselor Kevin Brennan. And finally, this was our first advisory meeting with students and the principal of the Taunton Public Virtual Academy. In attendance was Principal Isa Rodriguez, as well as several students from the Taunton Public Virtual Academy. Students shared that the virtual environment allows them to do their best work, manage their anxiety, and access teachers when needed. They appreciate the self-paced structure and feel more comfortable, supported, and academically successful than they were in a brick-and-mortar setting. Several credited the program with helping them feel more connected and more confident despite being in a virtual setting. Students requested expanded course offerings, including arts, literature, and world languages, and more extracurricular opportunities tailored to the virtual learners. Overall satisfaction with flexibility, autonomy, and the staff's supportive nature was something that was commented on and made very strong by the students in attendance. That concludes the high school advisory report.
Motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Motion to accept the report.
On, please. On discussion.
On discussion, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Dr. DeMello.
May I ask why you had to report that out, Superintendent, when the chair is in attendance tonight?
I took the minute, so I said I would report it out because I'm familiar with the minutes, that's why.
I'm sorry?
I took the minutes, and I typed the minutes, so I'm more familiar with the minutes, so therefore I reported it out on behalf of the chair.
And there was no other committee members present at that meeting?
Mrs. Fagan was also present.
I was present.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All set?
Did we vote? Did we vote?
No.
Motion made and seconded on that motion.
Motion to accept the report.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, you have it. TESSA collective bargaining, Mrs. Sharbs.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. The TESSA collective bargaining met on Thursday, November twentieth, 2025. The meeting started at two-thirty-four PM. In attendance was myself, who was the chair, Mrs. Fagan, and Ms. Santos was absent, along with the leadership team and members of TESSA. Negotiations are still ongoing. Due to their lawyer being out of work the month of December for a medical reason, we will not meet again until January sixth. The meeting concluded at four-twenty-nine PM, and that concludes my report.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it. TAA collective bargaining, are you gonna take that, Dr. DeMello?
Yes, the TA collective bargaining subcommittee met on eleven-twenty-four. Negotiations are ongoing. No, we had a TA, sorry.
Tendive agreement, yes. Motion to accept that report from the chairman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Tendive agreement on those remarks. Yes, we do.
I just want to congratulate the members of the TAA subcommittee on an excellent and well-bargained contract. Great job, everyone. Excellent job, Chairperson DeMello.
Thank you.
All right, so we've all voted to accept the report, right? We're all set?
Correct.
Correct.
All right, Long Range Planning and Public Properties Subcommittee, Mr. Viera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Long Range Planning and Public Properties Subcommittee met on November twenty-sixth, 2025. This was a meeting that was prompted from our last school committee meeting. The subcommittee consists of myself, Dr. DeMello, and Mr. Gilianis. District Administrator Superintendent Cabral, Assistant Superintendent Brenda Monahan, Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas, were present. Item discussed were vestibules. Assistant Superintendent Monahan and Director Freitas presented a report outlining the FY twenty-six capital improvement plan projects previously approved by the school committee, including associated cost and funding sources. The summary aligned with the district's current capital improvement and vestibule project document. The subcommittee reviewed the list of completed vestibule projects across multiple school sites. Mrs. Monahan and Mr. Freitas provided updates on the twenty-three and twenty-four completion, confirming that the work was finished as planned and within expected cost. Administration presented the remaining vestibule projects still requiring design and construction. The estimated cost to complete the remaining work is approximately six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. Mrs. Monahan and Mr. Freitas addressed numerous questions from the subcommittee regarding scope, timeline, and cost drivers. All questions were answered satisfactorily. Mr. Enos noted that the City of Taunton has allocated five-hundred-thousand from the capital improvement funds to support this work. A motion was made by Dr. DeMello and seconded by Mr. Enos to authorize the administration to proceed to a bid for the remaining vestibule projects at a cost not to exceed six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, with five-hundred-thousand funded by the City of Taunton Capital Improvement Fund, and the remaining balance financed from the Taunton School Department revolving account as a one-time expenditure. The motion passed three-nothing, and the meeting was adjourned at eight-thirty-five AM. That concludes my report.
Motion to accept the report.
Motion made. Motion to accept the report.
Oh, I just did that.
I can't make a motion.
Oh, I can't make, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Motion to accept and place on file.
On discussion?
Yeah, and accept. Yeah.
Motion to accept the recommendation.
Adopt the recommendation.
And adopt, yeah.
Adopt the recommendation.
All those in favor?
Aye. Dr. DeMello had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On discussion. Yeah, Mr., I think you failed to mention that these vestibule projects have been ongoing since our late member, Joe Martin, was on the school committee with us. And, you know, I don't know if it was a issue with money and how this five-hundred-thousand dollars miraculously just showed up, but it should never hinder the safety of our faculty and staff. So, you know, going forward, I wish that the Long Range Planning Subcommittee would be more abreast of issues that are taking place that, you know, sometimes we don't know about, and we find out at a meeting in a public forum of safety issues going on and ongoing that should be addressed in more of an executive-type manner. So I just want to add that, Mr. Chairman, if you allow that, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. The discussion was that it started when they, and Superintendent Cabral, you stop me if I'm incorrect, the discussion of vestibules and school safety started when they were building Mulcahy, which was before I was on this committee, and has been progressing in accordance with the plan set forth by Long Range Planning and the Superintendent of Schools. Superintendent, anything you want to add?
Yes.
Are we on schedule from what the Long Range Planning had set up? Are we scheduled for the festival?
So the motion, the recommendation that you made tonight was to authorize the administration to go out to bid for the remaining vestibules that hopefully should be completed before the end of the school year, well before the start of the next year.
Now, we're taking a vote, are we all set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. The next.
Can we down and have a roll call vote because it involves money?
Sure.
Yes.
Mrs. Sharbs?
Yes.
Mr. Kulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes. Ms. Santos?
Yes.
And Mr. Laura?
Yes, and Dr. DeMello.
And Mr. Dr. DeMello, excuse me.
Yes, who made the motion to have a roll call vote?
I made the suggestion.
I made the suggestion.
Superintendent, do you think we would put our students, faculty, and staff in any danger? I mean, to have a roll call vote, to be on record? I mean?
Only because it involves expending funds, Dr. DeMello. In case it gets questioned by the auditors, then we have a roll call vote that the school committee authorized the expenditure to satisfy the auditors. That's all. I would never question the school committee when it comes to safety. Just putting on my business manager hat, which I walk for eight years.
So we have, do we have a, a minimum plateau that we must have a roll call vote? Because I've been there eight years, and I, I don't know what that number is. Is it $50,000, $500,000? Apparently, it's only $190,000 because the city's kicking in, the other $500,000, just for my, you know, edification going forward.
Again, I think it's a good practice for the committee to have it on record, that everyone voted in favor, and to have it as a roll call vote. The committee wishes not to follow my recommendation. You don't have to follow my recommendation. I'm just the superintendent.
Superintendent, it's not that. It's just, it just feels like, you know, that you don't, how, how do I want to say this politely? We would never, I don't think anybody sitting at that table would put any risk to our students, faculty, and staff, whether it was a million dollars, $100,000, or $2 million. Again, this has been ongoing, like I said, when our late colleague, Joe Martin, was there. It was his emotion at the time. Chairman Fagan, you can correct if I'm wrong, you were there, and, you know, I don't think we would put anybody at risk, especially over a measly $690,000. We spent so many millions of dollars on so many different programs, and we would never risk the safety of our students, faculty, and staff.
I think, I think we might be talking about two separate things. I agree that we would never risk the safety of our students and staff, again, to make sure that when Mrs. Moynihan goes to process the invoice, the invoices, that the auditor and the treasurer know that we officially voted on it on the record. That's all, Dr. DeMello.
Again, we, we vote on a school warrant every two weeks in the millions of dollars. We never have a roll call vote. So this is very unusual, Superintendent, with all due respect.
Perhaps we can best discuss this when you return from your trip and not continue to waste the board's time.
This is not wasting anybody's time. It is 11:22 PM where I'm at, and I took the time to be here because I felt it was important to be there. So I just want to make sure going forward, how do we handle the matter as far as a measly $190,000 spend on public safety? That's all. Thank you.
Just, can I add something, just really quick? I serve on another board, and there's been a lot of things about regulations with school committees and all kinds of committees that meet, and we were apprised yesterday, there's more changes in the way we have to do stuff. So I don't, I, you know, we're careful about where we vote and voting on money things. So I, I'm not upset with you asking for that just in case something like that would come up. I don't, I just wanted to add that. All right?
And again, if I may, I'm not upset with the superintendent. I just want to know what the practice is. What's the threshold? Because if that's, if that's what we need to do going forward, as chairman of finance and law, I'll call for a roll call vote every time we have a finance and law Subcommittee meeting, that's all.
I think we're just, it's a, taking, taking a little bit of caution, but we're gonna move on to the next thing, which I believe is me talking about, now I misplaced everything.
High school Subcommittee. Mr. Pulowski.
There's my notes. All right. We met this evening, the high school Subcommittee meeting, myself and Mr. Viera here. We met with Principal Byron about the state of Parker Middle School, and he had some impressive things to show us this evening. He's talking, and some interesting things that we found out tonight that, that are occurring in education too, because a lot of things are changing. But he talked about the, his school, his district, how his targets that he had, he's got four different things that he was following. His first one was double the amount of perfect scores within the MCAS Open Response Essays by spring of 2027. I believe he said they did not, did they not attain that because of something, or?
He said they attained one the previous year.
Yeah, they attained one the previous year, but I guess they're doing different things now. They're using AI to read the, the, the things, the open question responses and the stuff like that. So he said that, that's kind of making the scores not look good, but that they've had perfect, ten perfect essays as a result of that. So it's a tremendous gain when compared to years before, but the other issue is they're doing it with AI, so I don't know how they programmed those computers. His, one of his other things, reduce the amount of blank responses on the MCAS ELA Open Responses by 50%. He said you're better off writing something than nothing, because at least if you write something, you might get one point. But if you leave a big blank, so they have to train, retrain the kids how to do these things. The next thing he talked about was the mind-up, social-emotional learning. He said they're really trying to get that going. He said they had some difficulty with trying to get it done, but they're working to improve that, excuse me?
Consistency.
Yeah, the consistency in the program, and he says it hasn't been happening with all the best of consistency, but it's, it's been a difficult year for everybody. And the last thing he spoke about was to do an attendance program, to get the attendance up, which they've also managed to do in the city. He talked about the dynamics of the school he's in, how Parker has, they've increased their number of low-income and high-need students. There's been a decrease in the newcomers program. I have to recalibrate their, their scores and how they get the MCAS scores to go up, even though they don't really count for anything right now. They still like to use them as a tool to see where they are, because they're using AI to score, and then, but MCAS is going in the right direction. And he said another issue with the school that you don't think about, and he has a very transient population, and he said there's a lot of new faces in the school every year because they got a whole bunch coming in and a whole bunch going out. I remember him saying that. He said almost half of any class is new kids. So if you go back and look at, and I remember Steph talking about what happens in schools where kids come in and out like a revolving door, there's often a decline in scores, but he very proudly pointed out that he exceeded in, Parker exceeded the district 48 and 52 in math. Two years in a row, they did that. He has the hot, Parker has the highest teacher attendance rates of all the middle schools, and the PBIS intervention, which is, we had a tough time with this one. What was it again?
I'd have to check my notes.
Yeah, was it positive behavior?
Intervention.
Intervention scores. And he said they're, they're doing well on that, too. So he, he presented a really nice-ish thing with Parker School and how proud he is of it and how the numbers have gone up, and the behavior's also gotten better. There's fewer suspensions there, so he has a lot to be proud of.
He does. I think of the public thirteen categories that they're rated on, he improved on nine of them.
Yeah. So he was very happy with what he did and very upbeat about it, so that's my report.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Of the Subcommittee.
Aye.
Aye.
As stated.
Excuse me? Everybody all set? Everybody's aye? All those in favor, aye?
We're ready to, we're ready to vote.
I got here at 2:00 this afternoon, so.
I liked the presentation. She did very well.
Finance and law.
No, no prepared statement, just from here. That's great.
Finance and law, Dr. DeM, oh, no.
That's why she's our secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance and Law Subcommittee met today at 5:45. The committee is myself, Dr. DeMello, Mrs. Shavz, in attendance for the administration, Superintendent Cabral, Assistant Superintendent Moynihan. One item on agenda was bills payable in the amount of $1,305,350, 384 cents. A motion was made and seconded with Dr. DeMello voting president on Pride, Inc., as he serves on the Board of Directors. Questions were asked, responses were given, and the motion passed three-nothing. That concludes my report.
Motion to accept the report, with the recommendations adopted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
See?
New business. Any new business?
Did we do, oh, I'm sorry, no.
This might be some new business, just, I had in the packet a thing for the Christmas parade. I don't know, I don't see any way to respond here. I'm sure they might like to know if we'd come, but Dr. Cabral said if you want to say whether or not you're going.
Yeah, we got it, we got it in the packet.
Oh, you got it?
We got it in the packet, yes.
Okay, so I didn't know if you emailed some of it back, but.
There's an email that said to, I can't remember who.
Lika was the one.
Okay, so.
If you have an RSVP, feel free to connect with me or with any of the five, we'll RSVP for you, too.
You marching with the reindeer?
Turkeys.
Turkey.
Okay. Unfinished business action items update. Response from City Council regarding request for joint meeting, see enclosure.
In your packet, I would ask, ask that you refer to the third paragraph in the memo dated December 1st, 2025, response from City Council regarding request for joint meeting. In the third paragraph, you'll note it states that Council President Martin replied via email on November 26th. In his response, he expressed appreciation for the outreach and shared that he believes it would be best, most beneficial to hold a joint meeting after the newly-elected City Council is sworn in. He noted that the incoming council will have a more meaningful role in any long-term decisions that may result from this discussion. So we'll, I'll wait for the replies from the new City Council once it's sworn in and communicate that with the school committee.
Motion to accept the report or the communication, and to also extend that he recommend that we meet with the new, newly-elected council members.
Second.